This shit is easy. This shit is easy. How did, how did Jack Nicholson do this, you know?
How old were you when you retired?
No, I was sixty. Nine years ago.
Nine, nine years?
Nine years. What do you think you're loaded?
I'm studying that.
I retired at forty.
Yeah. At forty? Oh, yeah.
How many, how many years you got with the school?
Uh, just finished my twentieth.
Well, you're good for another pension.
Yeah, two more, yeah, I can get a pension now. For two more years.
Good for you.
I love America, very, very good. I stay. I stay.
Yeah, you know what, Michael, you spent your time down in the bunker.
Spent my time in a lot of places.
I didn't know that.
You are unmuted.
Call a meeting to order, could we please stand for a pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Good evening, everyone, like to call to order the Borough of Saro Planning Board Meeting of July fifteenth, twenty twenty. Beth, has this meeting been advertised in accordance with the open public meeting act?
Yes, Chairman, it has. To help keep the meeting at or, as organized as possible, residents who wish to speak in one of the public portions are to press star nine, which will notify us that a person from the public wishes, I think your wishes to speak. At that time, you will be asked for your name and address and be limited to a five-minute comment period.
We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Diadio?
Yes.
Councilman Delena?
Here.
Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Mr. McEnone?
I am present.
Ms. O'Leary, Ms. Ochangay, Ms. Ms. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Savili? Mr. Thai?
Here.
Chairman Davis?
Here.
Mr. Cornell?
Here.
Mr. Alfari?
Here.
Mr. Fowler?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. A memorialization of resolutions?
Yes, tonight we have OEG Building Materials Preliminary and Final Site Plan Application, six thousand and one, Boardington Avenue, block nine, lot one.
As for a motion?
I'll make a motion to pass that amendment.
Second.
We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Diadio?
Yes.
Councilman Delena?
Yes.
Mr. McEnone?
Yes.
Ms. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Thai?
Yes.
Chairman Davis?
Yes.
Resolution adopted.
Thank you. Now look for an acceptance for the minutes from the June seventeenth, twenty twenty. Um, does any of the members have any questions on those minutes? And if not, I would entertain a motion to accept.
After reviewing the minutes, I make a motion, we accept the June seventeenth, twenty twenty minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. Um, there any communications on the agenda?
No, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Um, now we'll have site plans and subdivisions.
Tonight we have the place at Saraval amended site plan, Main Street, block one seventy-five, lot ten point oh one.
Is the attorney on, will do the applicant?
I don't see Brian on here. He's dropping on, he's on right now. Hello, you, you can hear me now? Yeah, we have you, Brian. You see, you have video? You don't have video. I can't, I don't see a video button on my screen. Try clicking the top right corner. There's a, there should be a little, uh... There's a full screen. It seems like most of my team is having problems with video. I can't see you again now, I had just seen you. Hello?
We can hear you.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know why there's no audio, you think maybe I... I don't think the rest of my team has audio either, or excuse, video rather. Yeah, I have audio, but I don't have the video. I don't know if we have a solution?
You're asking us?
Yeah, you know.
We can hear you well, I mean...
You have, when you're looking at your Zoom, is it on the website you're on, or do you have the app open? I went through the website. The browser. If you look at, what I'm looking at is I have on the bottom left corner, there's a video, there's a mute button, and there's also a, it says stop video, do you see that same? No, no, we just have a mute button.
Yeah, this is Barbara, there's, um, only a audio, there's no video option on this link. It was, uh, the link from the agenda that we used.
Yeah, we're gonna see if we're gonna put you in as a panelist.
Yes. Obieski, Bush.
There you go. That's better.
Okay, yeah, see a video. There you go.
There we go.
All right.
That looks like a planning board meeting.
All right, there's Barbara.
There you go.
Is there anybody else that we should be adding?
There's Dante, all right, we're...
Uh, this is my leader, I'm seeing my video.
All right, we got Dan Bush.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you.
And then you need, uh, Art Hogan.
Yeah, you can change it. You can change your backdrop. You good?
Okay.
Yeah, we're good.
I don't have, I don't have video, uh, of me, I'm assuming you can see me?
No. Do you have a button, hey? Yeah, it looks like there's video, there we go.
Yeah, I have my video off, now I'm good.
Yep.
Excellent.
Okay, ready to proceed?
Sure, there it is, I guess I'll... Hi, this is, uh, this is Mr. Brian Harvey from, uh, Art and Brian, on behalf of the, uh, place in Saraval. Application for amended preliminary and final major site plan approval for, uh, the development of eighty-nine residential, um, apartment units consisting of eighty-eight, um, affordable housing units, as well as one superintendent apartment. Uh, the project also consists of a clubhouse, a tot lot, um, and associated, uh, site improvements. Just by way of a little background with respect to the project, it's, uh, located in the River Road, uh, redevelopment area, it's within the, uh, portable housing district. Property is presently owned by the, uh, Saraval Economic and Redevelopment Agency. Um, the place in Saraval is the designated redeveloper for the site and has a redevelopment agreement with, uh, SARAH. The project implements the borough's, uh, settlement agreement with the, um, Fair Share Housing Center. Uh, the project is included in the borough's housing element and fair share plan, that is, um, recognized by the Superior Court's final judgment of compliance and repos as to the borough's, uh, affordable housing obligations. Um, previously, uh, this SARAH had obtained, uh, minor subdivision approval for a sixty-four, uh, approximately sixty-four acre parcel to divide this parcel into three lots, one of it, one of which consists of the, uh, project site. That, that occurred in August of two thousand nineteen, and then in September of two thousand nineteen, uh, the place at Saraval received preliminary major site plan approval for the project. The prior approval consisted of the same number of units, um, basically same amenities, uh, however, after the prior approval, the, due to some wetlands issues with respect to the site, that required a, um, redesign of some of the layout with respect to the site. The, you know, the prior plan, um, included a, uh, you know, prior approval, excuse me, included a, uh, landscape buffer variance. Uh, I just wanted to note that since the prior approval, the redevelopment plan has been amended so that where the, the prior buffer variance was required, um, with respect to adjoining residential zones, now it is only required with respect to adjoining existing residential users. So based on that, um, you know, you'll hear some testimony tonight about the buffer variance, but it, it is really only required along the southern boundary of the site, along Main Street, and, you know, there will be, there is some grading in that area, but the area will be restored and there will be, we will respect that fifty-foot, uh, landscape buffer. For this evening, I have three witnesses, I have, uh, Dan Bush, a licensed professional engineer from Major Consulting, we have Ray Liotta, Land State Market, second professional planner, and I have Bob Hogan, a licensed contractor. I guess before we proceed to the hearing, I just want to confirm that the, uh, notice to the hearing was proper and the support has jurisdiction. Brian, that is correct, I've reviewed, uh, the notice and I, and I, um, everything looks in order and we have jurisdiction. That's great, thank you. Um, with respect to the exhibits, I know we had those, uh, pre-marked, I don't know if we need to discuss those initially, or will this, uh, work through the exhibit as the, you know, move for our testimony?
Yeah, so, um, yeah, as long as when you go through the exhibits, please note A dash one, and then we'll pull that up to show everybody.
Okay, great, thank you. At this time, I'd like to, uh, introduce, uh, Dan Bush, um, from Major Consulting, to provide his, uh, engineering testimony. Um, I don't know if he can be sworn, or... Yes, Mr. Bush, can you please, uh, raise your right hand? You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Yes, I do. Can you please state your name for the record? Sure. And spell your last name? Sure, Dan Bush, B U S C H. And if you wouldn't mind providing your qualifications for the board? Sure. Sure, I'm, I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, um, I've been in the business for, uh, twenty-five years, uh, testified before this board on numerous occasions, the last of which was for the Riverton Site Plan Approval last, uh, December. Um, I'm familiar with, uh, this application, it was prepared by, uh, one of the, one of my engineers under my supervision.
Dan, has been a motion to accept your credentials? Do we have a second?
Thank you. Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. If we could put up, uh, A one, that'd be great. Thank you.
Look at this.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you. So what, what we're, what we're looking here is, this is our, our land use exhibit that is identifying the three properties which were subdivided, uh, last year, uh, twenty, in, uh, August of twenty nineteen. Um, tonight's application is just with respect to the pink, the affordable housing lot, which is the thirteen, um, thirteen point seven four five acres, and that is, uh, lot ten point oh one. But that is, that is the, the, the site plan application that is before you this evening. Um, we are, as, uh, Brian noted, in the, uh, River Road redevelopment area, um, the proposed, uh, affordable housing, uh, use is a permitted, uh, use in the, in the zone. Uh, if we could move on to A two, please?
They're with us?
Sure. Excellent. Thank you. Um, as you can see, a lot ten point oh one is, is heavily wooded, basically all woods, under, uh, existing conditions. Um, the white lines indicate all the, um, ecological constraints, those being wetlands, wetland buffers, um, flood hazard repairing zones, uh, which occupy about sixty-two percent of the site, so you can see that the site is heavily constrained, and you'll see how that relates to the development plan when, uh, when we move forward. And also you'll see along the Easterly, uh, right along the Easterly property line, is the, uh, existing, uh, JCPN L easement, which also, um, restricts, restricts, uh, is a constraint with respect to, uh, uh, development on the site. You can obviously see on the southwest corner, you can see the senior center, the existing, uh, residential uses along Main Street, um, and in the upper left is the, uh, the, uh, the, the electric, uh, electric plant, and then obviously the cul-de-sac at the end of, uh, currently, uh, Saraval Boulevard. In general, the site, the site grades from, from away from Main Street towards, uh, the Raritan River, there's roughly about a thirty, about thirty feet of fall from, um, uh, from the Main Street side of our property to the Saraval Boulevard, uh, side of the property. So with that, if we could move on to, uh, A four? Great, thank you. So A four, this is the, 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 the site plan, colorized site plan exhibit, um, it's basically the landscape plan from the, uh, from our plan set, just, uh, colorized and overlaid on, on, on an aerial, the same aerial that was, uh, for that matter, uh, just up on the screen. So this shows the, 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 the proposed project, um, eighty-eight units in the, uh, five, uh, residential buildings, and then the one, uh, community, uh, building, which also has a, a tot lot adjacent to it, um, total of eighty-eight units with, uh, one unit for the superintendent. Uh, community building is about seventeen hundred and fifty square feet, and contains the management office as well. Site includes, uh, a hundred and seventy-nine parking stalls, which meets the residential site improvement standards, as well as the redevelopment plan requirement of, uh, at least two stalls per unit. There are a to, this includes a total of fifteen, uh, handicap, uh, parking stalls, which are located around each of the buildings adjacent to the entrances to provide the, basically the shortest path for accessibility purposes. Um, the ground floor units are handicap accessible. Um, we also have, as part of the project, um, to service, uh, refuse and recycling, there are three, uh, enclosures, um, you know, basically, uh, two, two buildings share one enclosure, um, with respect to just kind of, uh...
This meeting is being recorded.
As far as, uh, move-ins, you know, as people are moving in, um, they are, uh, required to register and schedule their move-ins with the, the property manager. Um, they tend to be, uh, moving locally, so they do not, uh, you know, they typically using a U-Haul, or, uh, you know, some small, uh, you know, van, or, uh, perhaps a small box truck. Um, the, uh, site is serviced by a, uh, single, uh, gang mailbox location, which is in the, uh, near the very entrance of the site adjacent to, um, building one. Um, with respect to the, how we accommodated the, the wetlands on the, on the site, you'll see, um, a pocket in the, in the mid, in two pockets in the middle of the site, um, there are retaining walls around the, basically entirety of those wetland areas to preserve those wetlands. Um, in addition, we have, uh, large retaining wall along the northerly, uh, edge of the development, these retaining walls are as, as tall as twenty feet, uh, along that northerly side, and then, uh, on, on average, six to ten throughout the site, so it's a, there is a large amount of retaining wall. Um, for safety purposes, we have a, we, we, we have a four-foot-high, uh, chain link fence for, for fall protection at the, for those retaining walls. Um, just briefly with respect to the signage, you'll note, uh, in the upper left-hand corner of the exhibit, near the entrance from Saraval Boulevard, we do have a one conforming, uh, monument sign, uh, to identify the site. With respect to circulation, uh, as you can see, you come in from Saraval Boulevard, that is a boulevarded access, uh, drive coming into the site, which will ultimately be dedicated to the borough. Uh, within the site, we have, um, our, our access driveways, two-way, twenty-four-foot drive aisles through most of the site, um, and there's, uh, with, in proximity to, uh, buildings one, three, and four, there are one-way drive aisles that are twenty-foot wide, which, uh, provide access to those parking stalls, as well as, uh, provide access for, uh, emergency vehicles. The roads, um, and the parking, the drive aisles, that all meets the, uh, residential site improvement, um, standards. Um, and the, the Boulevard entrance, uh, coming from Saraval Boulevard into the site, um, because that is a Boulevard under, by residential site improvement standards, that is, uh, provides our two means of access for emergency purposes. Um, we did, eh, as part of the application submit a circulation plan, that, um, showed a, you know, how a, a, a fire truck, a ladder truck more specifically, could circulate throughout the site, um, that is the most restrictive, uh, vehicle, as far as, uh, requiring the greatest, uh, area to make maneuvers. Um, that exhibit demonstrated that, uh, the, the fire truck could circulate throughout the site, uh, within all the drive aisles, um, so we can also accommodate the necessary trash trucks, whether, um, school vehicles, whatever type of vehicle, uh, would be accessing the site, we, the, the site will accommodate. Um, with respect to sidewalk, um, little difficult to see on the exhibit, um, but there are sidewalks around each, each and every one of the buildings, um, on the building side of the, of the site, um, anywhere's adjacent to, uh, parking stalls, that sidewalk is a minimum of six feet wide, measured from the back of curb. Um, elsewhere on the site, uh, where it is not, uh, adjacent to parking stalls, where there could be a, a vehicle overhang, um, there is a four-foot sidewalk, which provides adequate connectivity between each of the buildings, and then also, that sidewalk then extends out, uh, along our access drive out through Saraval Boulevard, and as you can see, in the, again, in the upper left-hand corner, connects to that existing sidewalk in, um, Saraval Boulevard. Um, there are a couple of, um, waivers, uh, necessary with the, with the sidewalk. One is that, um, under RISAS, uh, residential site improvement standards, uh, you'd need sidewalk on both sides of the street, um, with the nature of the, uh, environmental constraints, the ecological constraints, necessary for retain walls, that necessitate the retain walls. Um, we're providing sidewalk just on the one side of the street, and you can see that, uh, the connectivity to Saraval Boulevard, uh, as well as the sidewalk within the site, so, um, you, there's no need to cross the street, um, uh, to utilize the sidewalk, it's all on the building sides, um, so that additional sidewalk on the other side of the street, quite frankly, would never even be used, um, so we, we believe that, that relief can be granted. There's also, um, uh, the areas that are not six-foot wide, the four-foot wide sidewalk, uh, although certainly provides, uh, for adequate, uh, pedestrian access, um, that four-foot wide sidewalk, uh, does require, uh, uh, relief because it is adjacent to the, uh, the access, uh, the access roads. Um, there is one other, uh, uh, relief associated with the, with the sidewalk, and there are so, there are small areas, um, adjacent to building one, four, and five, and you can kind of see them, they, there's, those are buildings that have the jogs, the, the building one is in the, is in the upper left, and building four is kind of centrally located, and then building five is in the, the lower right, so accommodate those jogs, uh, the sidewalk, uh, well, the building really is extending out to the sidewalk, um, and it gets as small as one point eight five feet is the minimum, but the overwhelming majority of the sidewalk is, is well more than, uh, five feet from the, uh, from the building, but to accommodate those jogs, uh, there is a, a, a reduction in that setback from the, uh, from the, uh, from the building. Um, just briefly touching on, on, uh, on, on traffic, um, basically on I T E, the site would generate a maximum of forty-four peak hour trips, um, simply put, anything that is, uh, considered less than a hundred, uh, peak hour trips is, uh, defined by NJDOT by not a, not creating a significant increase in traffic, uh, so this would fall within that category and not have a, uh, not create a significant increase in traffic. Um, recognizing the, um, the, the, some of the constraints here, um, a portion of the site is in, uh, tidal flood hazard zone, uh, the elevation is, uh, the elevation of that flood zone is, uh, thirteen, elevation thirteen and fourteen, um, just to put it in perspective, our lowest finished floor is elevation twenty-nine, so we're on the order of fifteen feet, at least fifteen feet above that, um, flood elevation, so certainly don't have any, uh, issues from a flooding standpoint. Um, as I noted earlier, the site drains to the, uh, Raritan River, so, um, our project doesn't affect, uh, adjacent properties from, um, from a stormwater perspective. Um, just briefly touching on how stormwater is managed, uh, for the site, there's a series of four, uh, underground, uh, basins, uh, one pipe, and three with, uh, with chambers. Um, since the site is located, as I noted, in a tidal flood hazard area, we do not, um, need to provide, uh, peak flow reductions because it is flowing into a, a tidal water body. With respect to stormwater quality, we are required to provide, uh, for stormwater quality, which is the eighty percent, um, pulse suspended solids removal, um, and we provide a series of six, um, manufactured treatment devices of... We provide a series of six manufactured treatment devices, overflow filters, to provide for that water quality. With respect to groundwater recharge, the site is subject to not only the boroughs, but also NJDP's requirements for groundwater recharge. We initially had notice for a waiver from the groundwater recharge requirements. I've had the opportunity to discuss that with your, with the boards engineer, and we can address the, and satisfy the requirements for groundwater recharge. Just wrapping up with utilities, we are going to, the water will be looped through the site from Saraville Boulevard, out along the easterly property line out to Main Street. The sanitary sewer will run to Saraville Boulevard, to existing gravity sewer in Saraville Boulevard. There is, in Mr. Cornell's letter, he notes the need for a look at the downstream capacity of that, of that pipe, and we've agreed to do so. The balance of the utilities will be brought in via Saraville Boulevard. With that, I don't have anything else under direct. If we want to touch on, if we want to move into Jay's letter, and we want to do questions?
We can switch over to Jay now.
I think, Mr. Chairman, at this point, if you want to have Mr. Bush review our report.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, just going through Section A, we can comply, the only comment is with respect to A6, which speaks to accommodating future development. To the extent that there's some known need for an easement, we certainly will cooperate, but, but as it stands right now, there's no known plan that would require some kind of cross-access easement. With respect to the balance of the comments in A, we'll comply. Section B, specifically regarding the sanitary sewer, as I noted, we're going to perform that downstream study. Section E, with respect to the water distribution, we will comply. With respect to Section D, which is storm sewer, as I noted, Mr. Cornell and I had the opportunity to discuss the recharge, and we can address those comments. That takes us to Section E, which is soil erosion and sediment control. We will address those comments. With respect to the landscaping and lighting comments in Section F, we'll have our landscape architect testify, and he will go through those, those three comments in the course of his testimony.
Mr. Chairman, just a question. Mr. Bush, the encroachment into the 50-foot buffer area, are you going to speak to that, or is your landscape architect?
I think that's something the landscape architect can do.
Thank you.
Again, if you wanted to discuss, you know, that, you know, the small grading area within the buffer. Yeah, I couldn't hear the questions, I'm sorry. I think it was asking if you were going to discuss the landscape buffer easement along Main Street, the variance that we're... I can certainly speak to it. There is a small area, actually, it's, as you look at the exhibit, it abuts the residential units adjacent to Main Street, where it's actually labeled wetlands. And with one of the, with some of the grading that is necessary in that area, as I noted, there's substantial grade changes across the site. There's an encroachment of grading in that area, which will result in some clearing. Having said that, that area is also going to be restored with vegetation. So at the end of the day, there will be a 50-foot landscape buffer, but there is a temporary disturbance for that grading that would be, that would occur, again, but would be temporary. Ultimately, there is a 50-foot buffer, but technically, that's the relief that we are seeking.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted that clarified for the board. So even though they need a variance, it's just for grading, there's no permanent structures, and eventually, when that work is completed, it'll be re-landscaped, so you're still going to have a 50-foot buffer when they're finished with their work.
That'd be great. Any members have any questions for Dan?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is Mike Viaggio. I have a question, actually, for Jay Cornell. Jay, where were you considering an easement? Like, why did you put that in your report, and where do you think we would need it?
The adjacent property that's going to be developed in the future, I think from the road area leading into the property, there may be a need for an easement. That was the concern, as to where that future access point is going to be. Is the adjacent senior complex going to need to cross this lot to get to the roadway? So that's, that's why we were raising the question.
All right, so you think that's something we need to put as a condition of approval?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think we should, just in case. If it's not needed, then it's not an issue, but if, in the future, that adjacent parcel has to cross this property to get to the roadway, then there would be a need for it.
All right, any objections from the applicant to make that a condition of approval?
I think our, well, number one, I think if we're talking about that it's going to come off of Saraville Boulevard, even, Saraville Boulevard, or excuse me, the main entrance road, that's going to be a public, basically, roadway. So, you know, I don't know if it necessarily would need an easement if the access coming off there. And then obviously, I think we'd want to understand, you know, where the easement's going and, you know, impacts, but obviously, you know, we'd, you know, we'd, we'd cooperate.
Reasonably cooperate is not a condition of approval, Mr. Harvey. And quite frankly, you're an attorney, you're not a planner. So I mean, my planner and my engineer's expert opinion on this, and if he thinks it needs to be a condition of approval, then I think I'll do it, and you should consider that would be a condition of approval.
Mr. Chairman, I think if we knew where the driveway was going to be, we could say yes or no, but we're not sure where the driveway's going to be located. If it is adjacent to the dedicated right-of-way, then I agree, a cross-easement's not necessary. But if the easement is going to have to cross a portion of the property that's going to remain outside of the dedication, then you may need an easement to get from the senior property to the roadway.
All right, so if we need it, we need it. And we don't know right now whether we need it or not. So there's no harm, especially since the applicant is saying he's going to cooperate, to make that a condition of approval.
So would it be just along the main entrance road is where we're considering it?
I think it's hard to say at this point, because we do not know where the driveway for the senior development is going to be. As I said, if it's adjacent to the entrance road that's going to be dedicated to the borough, then there's no need for an easement. But for some reason, if that driveway is adjacent to the applicant's property before it gets to the dedicated right-of-way, then there may be a need to have an easement to allow that to cross the applicant's property.
I mean, I just feel that, you know, along the, you know, the western boundary, you know, fairly encumbered with wetlands, I assume it would just have to be restored to the main entrance drive, which is going to be all of publicly dedicated state of road length.
Mr. Chairman, Mike McEnon, I agree, something needs to be put in. If it's not needed, it's not needed, what's to lose? Talking about something we neither, neither party knows where it's going to be. You save a lot of problems in the future if you just include it now. Not a difficult concept.
The audio wasn't very clear there. The clarity, Jay, just so everybody's aware, and just so, like, I can make sure the resolution is very clear, as it relates to where the potential easement would be, would it be, are you talking about near Saraville Boulevard, or is it the northern entrance? I'm looking at the plan correctly?
Dante, we're going to put Exhibit One back on.
If you look at Exhibit One, the purple area is future senior housing lot, and it's adjacent to the affordable housing lot. The access road curves along the, where the curve is in the pink and the purple, that's where the access road is going to be as part of this development, but we're not sure where the access is going to be for the senior housing. If it's below that curved roadway, there may be a need to connect across the pink to get to the dedicated roadway. That's, that's really what the issue is. More than likely, it's going to be along the curved portion that's going to be dedicated, and it wouldn't be an issue. But for some reason, when we see the site plan for the senior housing, and if the driveway is adjacent to the applicant's property, needs to cross the applicant's property, we're just saying that, let's get the easement now, rather than having a problem later.
Brian, any issue with that? Is it going to be an actual, I think, you know, in that area, I think there's a retaining wall. I don't know if, you know, it doesn't seem like it's practical, I think, after you get past the curved portion. I actually need to pull up the plan and see, you know, where those walls are going. And then is, then I guess the other question is, is it a, is it an easement that we're giving now, or is it a condition? Is it there in the future? Because I don't, I just don't see how we're giving, you know, an easement with an undefined location.
Well, I think it would be a condition of the approval, because, again, we don't have a location yet, if there is a necessity for it. Or would it be a condition that you would cooperate with providing an easement if one is necessary?
What does that mean? If he has a retaining wall and he can't do it, then he's not bound to it?
Mr. Bush, where is the retaining wall on the curved area? Does it run down the whole curved portion?
Yes, yes, it does. It almost reaches the end of that curve.
Okay, so it runs down that entire curved area. Jay, does that impact what you're looking for?
Well, it does, yeah. And that's, just because there's a retaining wall now, doesn't mean that it can't be moved in the future to accommodate an access road. This was a condition of the previous approval. This is something that was talked about before and wasn't a problem. It was in our prior report, that the, something that happens in the future. Unless someone can tell me where that driveway is going to go for the senior housing project, if it's going to connect directly to the Saraville Boulevard, then that, I don't know, it wouldn't be an issue. But at this point, since we don't know, we're just trying to go through and make sure that it's not a problem in the future.
Brian, you understand the issue we have, right? If we, if there's an approval for the senior center, and we don't have a condition for an easement now with you, it could turn into an issue down the road.
Yeah, I understand. It's, you know, from our...
We understand it's undefined at this point, but it's undefined because the future senior center is also undefined.
Would it be clear that, you know, any, you know, any, no additional permitting on our end, no cost to us, with respect to any of that interconnection?
I don't think that's, that's not our intention, is to make you build the road, it's just, if it's needed, and there's no other feasible access, then we would look to allow that access to get to the road across part of your property.
Senior center would...
Sure, that, the developer of the senior housing portion, it would be his responsibility to construct that connection.
I think it would be important to make that clear as far as, you know, any condition.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is Mike Viaggio again. I don't see any reason not to include that it would be no cost, and that would be an unfair burden to the applicant.
I agree with Mr. Viaggio.
So for purposes of the resolution, to be clear, you're accepting the condition for a potential easement, with the understanding that no cost for improvements would be placed by the applicant?
Yeah, and, you know, no affirmative permitting obligations either.
No objection, Mr. Chairman.
And then, you know, and then I assume if we have any, you know, shared maintenance responsibilities, that would be built into the cost, you know, if there's any cost, cost sharing that needs to be done?
Yes.
Any thoughts?
Yes, that, that's acceptable.
Jay?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Is that all, Chris? Brian?
Any board questions? Mike's first.
Mike, do you have any other questions?
No, I'm good, I'm in fact.
Anyone on the board have any questions? We have the next witness, please.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to line up Ray Lio, a landscape architect and a structural planner.
Mr. Lio, can you please raise your right hand? Yes. Do you swear or affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, and not contradict the truth?
I do, yes.
Can you state his full name for the record?
Yes, it's Raymond Lio, L-I-O, D-P-N.
Can you please provide your qualifications for the board?
Yes, I have a bachelor's degree in landscape architecture from Rutgers University. I'm a licensed landscape architect through examination since 1985, and I'm also a licensed planner, also through examination in New Jersey, and nationally, since 1988.
Make a motion.
I've testified in Saraville many times on both landscape architecture and empty issues.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Continue.
Thank you.
Mike, could you, you know, we just start out by just signing the...
Yes, if we could ask Exhibit A4 to put back up again. All right, just so that we can re-learn at the board to Exhibit A4, north is straight up on the plan, the yellow boundary line. Around the site is the project perimeter, and as Dan Bush described earlier, the white line, where it describes some of the environmental constraints such as wetlands, wetland buffers and flood hazard areas throughout the site. Now, as part of the landscape plan development, we review the ordinance, and the landscape plans were designed following the Borough Landscape Design Guidelines and the redevelopment plan guidelines for landscape components. There are a series of those items that I will cover, many of which we can... Many of which we comply with. There are a few waivers, design waivers, and there is one variance that was discussed briefly related to the buffer. We'll get to that in a little bit. So for the street scape requirement within the redevelopment plan, deciduous trees are to be planted 50 feet on center on both sides of the boulevard road as it enters the site. Due to the physical constraints that limits the footprint of this boulevard road, because of the wetland areas and the need for retaining walls, we don't have room to actually install the shade trees within the right-of-way outside the pavement areas on either side of the road. We are installing trees in the boulevard center landscape area. And that, the fact that we cannot fit the shade trees along the outside edges of the boulevard road is a design waiver. We have discussed with the applicant the need to work with the contractor at the time of construction to minimize clearing on both sides of the entry road, because it cuts through existing wooded area. And if we limit the disturbance outside the retaining walls, we will essentially have tree canopy along both sides of the boulevard road, essentially consistent with what the shade tree requirement would be in the redevelopment plan. The open space design requirement within the redevelopment plan has a series of four different criteria, and the plan complies with all of those, and that relates to all non, areas not covered by buildings or pavement or other improvements should be landscaped with a mix of evergreens, deciduous tree shrubs, and grasses. Evergreen sizes need to be four feet in height, where we're proposing five to six. The shrubs have to be a certain size, and the trees all have to be a certain size. All unimproved open space has to be left in its natural state, which we are complying with. And any trash receptacles or dumpsters are to be adequately screened, and the plan does include screening around those facilities. Now, there was discussion earlier about the buffer requirement. We do have a variance, it's a technical variance, as Mr. Bush described earlier. It's on the south end of the project where the project perimeter is along the back edge of the homes along Main Street. And there is some grading in order to fit these parking improvements into that area of the site. And there is some grading into that 50-foot buffer area. However, the landscape plan is replanting the disturbed area where the ground is being graded. And we are also adding evergreen material along the property line in an opening in the existing canopy area, so that we can supplement the existing conditions in that area. So for all intents and purposes, we will have a vegetated 50-foot buffer in that area. But technically, a variance is being requested or required due to the grading. There's a landscape design section 26-96.7, which requires a minimum of 20% of the lot to be landscape area or pervious surface. The lot is 75% pervious, so we comply with that requirement. The deciduous tree sizes need to be three-inch caliper, which we comply with, and we need the evergreen tree size requirements. We're also required to provide foundation plantings around all of the buildings in an area of at least five foot wide of a landscape strip, and the plan complies with that requirement. There were actually, for the parking lot trees, there were actually two different sections that are applicable. The first section is 26-98.1C1, and that requires trees to be provided in and around the parking lot at a rate of one tree for every 10 spaces. The plan requires 18 trees, where the plan is providing at least 45 trees adjacent to the parking. So we comply with that standard. It's the other parking lot standard, which requires one tree for every 20 parking spaces within the parking field itself. And the plan does not provide those trees, but in total, we're providing 45 trees in and around the parking lots. I'd like to also next move on to tree inventory and replacement plan requirements. The tree inventory was conducted by a major consulting tree expert, and what we found are the following information. As described earlier, the site is 13.75 acres in total. 11.53 of those acres is woodland. And the trees per acre, based on the study block information and inventory we took, indicates to us that there's approximately 226 trees per acre within the wooded area. That means that the trees within the wooded area would amount to approximately 2,600 trees. The woodland to be removed is roughly 5.73 acres. So the total number of trees removed, based on that ratio of 5.73 compared to the entire 11-acre wooded area, is 1,142 trees being removed, which is 43.8% of the woodland area, which is less than half of the trees on the site. And the total number of trees that would remain in the existing condition or in their existing state would be approximately 1,463 trees. Now, based on the tree removal, in the tree removal ordinance, there is a replacement requirement that by calculation requires 1,734 trees. The plan itself includes a total of 90 trees, so that leaves a deficit of approximately 1,644 trees. However, as this project is an affordable housing project and is consistent with the Affordable Housing Development Agreement, that agreement allows for things such as impact fees and requirements that are unnecessarily adding cost to the project to be waived. So a waiver from strict compliance for the tree replacement of the deficit or payment of a fee for the deficit is being requested. And that is, in fact, something that is being the redevelopment agreement and allows for that waiver to occur.
Right, just to clarify, it's in the Affordable Housing Development Agreement, I just wanted to clarify the location of the waiver.
Yes, that is correct. It's in the Affordable Housing Development Agreement, that's correct. So the replacement ordinance also has a separate additional tree requirement of one tree for every two parking spaces, which is in addition to the parking trees, parking lot trees in your ordinance, many of the trees at the three-inch caliper are required, and those many of the trees are being provided. Also, as you look at Exhibit A4, Dan described it a little bit earlier. If you look in the area between Buildings 1, 2, 3, and 4, and then the wetland area to the northeast of the clubhouse building, those areas and that existing vegetation and woodland will be preserved in those areas. And there was a comment, and the planners who had it, it appeared that they were going to be mown areas, but that in fact is not the case. Those areas and the vegetation in those areas would be preserved as existing vegetation and woodland within the wall, retaining wall area between the parking lots and those buildings. That's essentially the landscape testimony. If there are any questions, I'll move into the lighting at that. All right, you're done, I'm moving.
You got one?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
And I guess this is, yeah, this is Mike DiAddio, I guess this is to Jake Cornell. I don't remember ever, and I've heard a lot of accusations over the years, as many members on the board have heard, I don't remember ever using a ratio of trees that were removed. Usually, and one of the projects, one of the projects we're totally landing that Sarah is working on now, this actually went down and counted the trees that were going to be removed. Maybe it's not necessary in this case, because you don't want to pay for any of the trees that were removed. Now, and this is probably a question for our attorney, is it a requirement that the affordable housing area not charge the trees? Or they're just asking us not to charge?
That was what the agreement provided, it provided for a waiver of the replacement of trees or a fee associated with the replacement. And so, all right, so that really doesn't answer my question. Are they actually, the planning board, did not charge for trees?
So part of their testimony is dealing directly with one of the comments that Mr. Cornell had in his report, and they were just putting that on the record for clarity. They don't necessarily need to request it from us necessarily, because it was already in the Affordable Housing Agreement. But for clarity and for purposes of addressing a comment in Mr. Cornell's report, that's why the testimony was provided.
Okay. Mr. DiAddio, if I could maybe clarify something?
Yeah, please, I don't understand my attorney.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I was just going to clarify something on the tree inventory itself and the tree calculations. The calculation plans that were submitted do indicate the number of trees being removed. I was just giving a percentage of how many trees that was based on the entire woodland area, but there is an extensive calculation on those tree removal plans that describes the size of the trees, the type of trees, and the condition of the trees, including the calculations on the removal and replacement requirements.
All right, so if the ordinance or if the council agreed that in this area, you're not going to be charged for trees, what was the purpose of counting?
It's a site plan submission requirement.
So this board is not making a decision, and this is to my attorney again, we are not making a decision tonight on whether or not they're going to be charged for trees?
Correct.
Okay, it's already been decided, there's no need for trees?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. But would it be, you acknowledge that in the agreement with the power of, of that trees are not, you know, the trees are not charged? Okay, it just seems like a waste of money to go down and count trees when you're not going to be charged for them anyway. The other part of the, the way government.
I thought the same way, but it is a submission requirement.
I mean, that's the confusing part, is you went down and counted trees for no reason.
Well, the positive is, now as they choose, they're on the slate now.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Dante, if I can, I'll move into the lighting, this is fairly brief. We have two different types of fixtures that we're proposing on the site. They're both LED, they're both downward-directed fixtures. For the boulevard itself, we're using a colonial-style LED fixture that is provided by JCP&L for public roads. It's a 16-foot mounting height on a standard three-inch circular JCP&L fiberglass pole. The roadway illumination levels meet all of the ordinance criteria for both the roadway and the sidewalk. For the site lighting itself, once we get into the site, at the end of the southeast end of the boulevard entrance, we're also proposing a post-up colonial-style LED by Cyclone Lighting, which is similar in style and shape to the boulevard lighting, also a 16-foot mounting height on a straight aluminum pole. And the site illumination for both the parking, the drive-aisles, and the sidewalks meet the minimum requirements in the ordinance, so there is no variance or waiver needed for the lighting plan. The lighting plan complies with the ordinance requirements. If there aren't any lighting questions or landscape, additional landscape questions, I can move into some of the planning sections. All right, I'll move into the planning testimony, and we've heard a lot about the site already, but just for general housekeeping, it's Block 175 lot, 10.01, River Road Redevelopment Area Affordable Housing District. That's what is proposed here on the 13.74 site. As you saw by the exhibits, the site is wooded and undeveloped, and immediately adjacent to the JCP&L, easement to the north and the east. And the site itself is significantly impacted by environmental constraints in the form of wetlands, wetland buffer, and flood hazard areas. I won't go into any great detail on the proposed plan. You heard a lot of that through the engineer's testimony. If there are any questions on those numbers, I can elaborate that. So with respect to the zoning review, the River Road Redevelopment Area Housing District, permitted uses are multifamily, affordable residential housing, including 100% affordable family rental development of 60 to 80 units, and this plan complies with that use. With respect to the bulk requirements, the plan complies with all of the standard bulk requirements within that district, so there are no advantages required from bulk standards. With respect to the variances in the design waivers, we have one variance that we discussed earlier that relates to the technical temporary grading in the buffer at the southern portion of the site where it joins the residences on Main Street. But that is cured by the revegetation of that graded area and filling in at the existing woodland to fortify that buffer between the site and Main Street. There are a series of design waivers. We talked about the street trees required along the boulevard within the redevelopment plan. The parking lot trees that are not provided, I discussed earlier in the landscape testimony. And we just discussed the tree replacement issue with respect to noncompliance with either a fee or complete replacement of the deficit. And then there's also the distance of the sidewalks to the building where the redevelopment plan requires, five feet from the building to the sidewalk, and in the few places where less than two feet. But this is a function of the site constraints and the need to have complete circulation around the buildings and the areas of no detriment. So the variances in the design waivers that we're proposing here are positioned as both C1, which is the hardship-type variance, and C2, which is called a flexible C. And the hardship-type variances are those where there is a peculiar and exceptional practical difficulty, or some exceptional undue hardship upon the applicant arising from things like exceptional narrowness, shallowness, or shape of a property, or topographic conditions or physical features that affect the property's development. And in this case, we have an exceptional, extraordinary condition with existing environmental features such as wetland, flood hazard, and wetland buffer.